I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. The first item on the meeting is to go into closed session. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Discussion, section 2.2-3, 711, number five, discussing, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And that is project number 2013004. Number three is discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And number one is old Blacksburg Middle School property. And number two is the government center. Dash one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And that is for the Library Board and the New River Valley Regional Water Authority. Number seven, is consultation with legal counsel on briefing of staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, or such consideration of briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or the litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring precision, provision of legal advice by such counsel. And that is office space lease for reassessment and mandate straight. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Yeah, she said she'd be late.
Yes.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is to go into a closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye. The next item is certification of the closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed at the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there for the majority of the meeting.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins? For the time that I was there.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Six hours will stay.
All right, the next item on the agenda is going to be our invocation. But prior to that, following the invocation, we're going to have a special guest lead us in the pledge. And I'd like Mr. Tuck to present and listen.
We're going to be asking Ryan Blosser to come forward and lead us in the pledge. Ryan has been serving in the Marine Corps for the last eight years. He signed up as soon as he graduated from high school. He was, has had deployments in, three deployments in Iraq, one in Afghanistan. I have had those phone calls from Iraq where he was telling me not to worry, and I kept hearing the mortar shells going off in the background. I want to thank him for his service. I feel like it's a privilege to have him lead us in the pledge tonight and appreciate his service to our country.
Okay. And I think we all responded that the same way. If we will please rise now, we will take a moment of silence for invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is our public address. And we have one person signed up for public address, and that's Paul Russler. If you'll please come forward and say your name and address, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Paul Russler on 2821 Wright's Way in Blacksburg. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about this, I understand loophole that we have in the ordinance that we're putting up cell towers. So it happens that there's one being planned to put up right across my property line. And my neighbor, he's been my neighbor for 37 years, and the last thing I would expect to have something like this happen. The point being that, as I understand it, they're making some sort of a jeremandering of an ordinance that says that you can put something like this on top of pre-existing facilities. I think somebody needs to define what pre-existing is so that this thing can be controlled in the same way that cell towers elsewhere are controlled. I think that what's happening to us is a travesty because it will reduce our property values. It will subject our younger children to potential, and this is still one of those things that people argue about, but potential wavelength electronic frequencies that may or may not be harmful to them. Until it can prove that they're not, I think we should control these things so that they don't create a cell hazard. I'm a poker scientist, and several years ago, we did some testing on just such a thing on baby chicks. And when we subjected them to these kinds of frequencies, they're during the incubi, during the breeding period, the down on became frizzle. It looked like hair that had been burnt. And when their juvenile feathers came out, they were also frizzle. In other words, the barbules and the things that make the feathers were all chewed up. We did have such things as frizzle feather in the chicken, but these were not that kind of chicken. These were lagers. So I do know that this sort of thing has an effect there. Now, whether it has effect otherwise, I don't know. Another point I'd like to make, to understand that there's been one of these things go up over and at the spawn under the same pretext, and they put a flagpole up. According to the federal code for displaying the flag, you cannot have anything above the flag except the standard eagle or some such directly balls that. And as of 35 years, I find that very offensive. I think for no other reason, somehow or another, you need to stop that thing. Particularly, I'm concerned about what's right next door to me. And there are some other folks here, I don't know if they're going to talk or not, but their neighbors with the same kind of concern. I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? If so, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Luke Hopkins. I live on Harding Road. As far as this, we might as well call this a cellphone tower. Because what is being built is said to be a utility pole, a light pole. But the hole has already been dug. It was dug by a 30-ton excavator with a giant jackhammer delivered by a tractor trailer. The hole is close to 20 feet deep, four feet wide. This is not a light pole. This is a loophole that an attorney has figured out how to put a cellphone tower in someone's, like, directly in someone's backyard. This is 60 feet from a house, 60 feet from another house. And I do believe that cellphone antennas are necessary. But this loophole is putting an antenna really, really close to residents, really, really, I mean, this is just going to diminish the property values in the direct surrounding area. When there is open land in the direct area that I know of, where a cellphone tower was already, like, proposed to be on a larger parcel, that property owner wanted to put it right next to the edge of that parcel so it wouldn't diminish his open land. This is, this is a tower. Yes, they're building a pole right now. It's a pole with an enormous foundation. What I propose is a county ordinance that prevents a structure to be, I mean, this is talking about putting a, loopholes, you can put an antenna on a pre-existing structure. Structure's not even there yet, just a hole in the ground. So what, two months from now, there's going to be some antennas on this pre-existing structure that was truly actually built for antennas? I mean, that's building a cellphone tower. But what I think should happen is, we should have a stronger ordinance that just prevents these situations so that towers can be built in locations that don't diminish property value, aren't on top of residents. I mean, this is something that, sure, it's probably not going to fall over with a foundation like this. But if it ever did, be pretty close to hitting a house. With that said, there's lots of things that the area residents have voiced. I have a petition here from over 100 residents talking about petitions for stronger ordinances on cellular antenna locations. And, you know, some of those things, it's just disguising towers. But it's going to be hard to disguise something that's literally right there, right around houses. And if this was a tower being built firsthand for a tower use, you could never do what's being done right now. So this is just a loophole. This is a loophole that should be closed now. Because if it's not closed now, this is just setting another precedent that is to be done all over this county and other counties. But there are, there are counties in Virginia that have ordinances that prevent this loophole. And I'm just here to voice my opinion related to that. I just, it's sad to see this actually happening, a hole being dug of this size for a wood pole for maybe a light. We all know that's not what this is for. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? And all the same rules apply, please.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette Rachi. I live at 2830 Windy Ridge Lane in the county Montgomery, and I'm a Montgomery County taxpayer. I found out about this issue this evening when I got home from work after a full day in an office seeing patients. I came down here because it's really important to me. I live two driveways down from where this is occurring. The character of the area is rural residential. There is a whole cluster of houses, and this is in their backyard. We had no idea it was happening. When I saw the big earth mover come out a few days ago, I assumed someone was putting in a well or another house was being built, and then I found out that this is the issue, that there's going to be a light pole, flag pole, and all of a sudden, a cell tower right in my backyard. It's going to diminish property values, it's going to change the character of the area, it's going to diminish the views and the open space. And there are certainly better places to do this where there is more open land around where it won't be impacting residents to such a great degree. And I would appreciate it if you would consider that and illuminate us on these things. I drove up and down the street to see if there was any sort of public notice, any sign regarding what was happening there, and there is absolutely nothing. If you didn't get a little notice in your mailbox, you'd have no idea. And that, to me, seems very underhanded. And it makes me question what the motivation is, as was brought up by the previous speaker, and how they're going about this whole process. I think we need the process illuminated, the residents in the area who are going to be greatly impacted by this need to know what's happening and know what the issues are. And there needs to be a lot more discussion before this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
My name's Barbara Rachi. I live at 2830 Windy Ridge in Blacksburg, two lots down from this proposed tower. My biggest concern is, I think someone's trying to pull a fast one here. This is, if, I think if someone, if the plan is to build a cell tower, it should be stated as such, and there should be appropriate public hearings and, and public comment. That clearly is not being done. There is this loophole where they're trying, they're putting up a so-called flag pole or tele, or light pole, and then at some point in the future, now that there's a pre-existing condition, we'll be able to put a cell tower on that. So clearly, the motivation is apparent from the, the deepness and the, and the structure of the foundation, as the previous speaker spoke. Clearly, this is not the intention of just making a light post or, or telephone pole or something of that nature. So I think my biggest concern is, yeah, we, nobody wants a, a cell tower in their backyard, and I'm sure that wherever it's going, people are going to say that. But it has to be in the light of day, it has to be through the, the process of public comment and regulations. So clearly, that's not happening here. They're, I think, they're trying to pull something that is, no one is going to be aware of what's done if we hadn't gotten this notice in our mailbox this evening. So all I would ask is that we bring this whole process to the light of day. If the cell towers was being planned there, then, then let's have a public comment period and, and really understand what the implications of that, of that would be. And that's not happening. So I don't, I appreciate that you could take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak at this public address?
Good evening, everybody. Joe Richmire, 2800 Wright's Way. I am also here to speak against the proposed light pole cell tower. When my wife and I heard about the discussion regarding it, obviously, we were concerned about the, the health risk. We do have small children. My wife is pregnant. We do, you know, realize that the FCC's done quite a few studies regarding the RF emissions and that technically, they are allowed. I think, as Mr. Russler alluded to, as more time goes along and more studies are done, I think you're going to see the health concerns of towers located in residential areas increase. So obviously, we're concerned about that. The, another concern we had, obviously, was property values and how it affects that. I don't know too many places where property values have actually increased because of it. Good signal's great, but we want to keep our property values high if possible. As all the other speakers alluded to, I mean, one of the main concerns was it just, it felt underhanded. Processes and applications are put in place to protect the interests of the county and its residents. And it, for some kind of back alley deal for a landowner, maybe to get some additional money, and all of a sudden, an existing structure's built and then, you know, it allows a provider to come in and to build a, a base station or other, yeah, that, that feels underhanded. And it just, I mean, it feels wrong. If it's wrong, obviously, I hope the board can help us to do something about that. But that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this public address?
My name is Lynn Wright, and I live on 2836 Wright's Way. And most of the things I was going to say have already been said, so I just want to make, make it known that I am against what's going on and for somehow redefining what pre-existing is or however this can, the loophole can be closed so that it's not having to, so been done so sneaky. And I appreciate what you do on that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this public address? Do I let him speak again? Do I let him speak again?
I would resist. I would have one more thing I'd like to say. When I found out about this, and I tried to find out what was going on, I made several phone calls. And I appreciate the concern I got from Matthew, I can't think of his last, yeah.
Professor Gable.
And, and that Perkins on this board, and the folks at the planning, the commission planning department.
Planning Department, yes, sir.
Bree and Derry. They both came out and were very helpful in getting information for me and that sort of thing. And I feel I thank them for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this public address? Seeing no one, we will close our public address. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chair, one thing, uh, Mr. Hopkins, you left your sunglasses up here.
All right, the next item on the agenda is addendums, and we have four of them?
Three. Three, just three.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we do have three items that we'd request be added to new business. Item C, which is a resolution making Montgomery County appointment to the NRV Regional Water Authority Board. Item D, which is a resolution accepting the conveyance from Mary B. Strab estate of property adjoining the county government center. And item E, a resolution approving lease agreement with Cascade Capital Partners LLC for county lease of property located at 16 North Franklin Street.
All right. I don't need a motion.
Motion in second, yes, sir. Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Under discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, and now we'll go into new business. And the first item on our new business is a resolution of appreciation for Frank Lau on the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Robert K. Miller on our planning commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item is subject C, a resolution making a county appointment to the New River Valley Regional Authority Board. Water Authority Board.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we put Mr. Meadows on as our representative.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you.
And the next item is a resolution accepting the convey, conveyance from Mary B. Strab estate of property adjoining the county government center. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. And subject E is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Cascade Capital Partners for county lease of property located at 16 North Franklin Street in Christiansburg, Virginia. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a little bit, I, as we've discussed, I'm hopeful that the staff will work with the Sheriff's Department to work out the security details about when the magistrate does move across and working through technology where we don't have to transport prisoners back and forth. With those types of assurances, I have no question about supporting this.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the first item on our work session is the School Resource Officer Grant.
Mr. Chair, I was wondering, do we have to do the items as they're listed here? I was just wondering for the benefit of our audience members if we could do the cellphone tower thing first.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Would that be possible?
Yeah.
All right, the board has done with me. No problem. All right, let's go to number three, which is a cell tower ordinance. And we'll open up for discussion, Marty, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll carry the discussion, Mr. Chair. I talked to, I talked with Deary Jenkins today, and it's about the situation that you heard at Wright's Way. Just to give you some context, our current telecommunications ordinance, we have two different definitions. We have telecommunications tower freestanding, which is when they come in and they want to build the tower, and under those, and put antennas on it, and under those circumstances, they have to get a special use permit in most, most areas, I think all areas. And then there's a telecommunications tower attached, which was developed in order to promote co-locating antennas on existing structures. Those existing structures may be a telecommunications tower, they may be like a church steeple, a silo. And what we've found with the present situation is, as Mr. Hopkins correctly pointed out, is that the AT&amp;T representative, he's gone to this property owner, and he intends to build And what we've found with the present situation is, as Mr. Hopkins correctly pointed out, is that the AT&amp;T representative, he's gone to this property owner and he intends to build what he's calling a flagpole, which it isn't a flagpole. I mean, he's building a telecommunications tower under the guise of a flagpole. And under our ordinance, flagpoles, there's no permit required for any flagpole. So he's trying to build a flagpole and then calling it an existing structure and then putting an antenna on it. And he's currently trying to circumvent the ordinance. But it's like, it's like the old saying, you can, you know, dress something up, but if it still oinks like a pig and smells like a pig, it's a pig. And that's what's going on with this telecommunications tower. So I talked with Derry, but we think the evidence is clear, what they're trying to do. We've got comments from the contractor who says, yeah, we're putting this in for telecommunications antenna. We've heard it from the owner, we've heard it from the AT&amp;T guy. Now, why would AT&amp;T representative build a flagpole?
That's right.
So tomorrow, Derry, I talked with Derry today, and tomorrow she's gonna write what's called a determination letter. She's the zoning administrator, and she's gonna shut down what's going on there. She's already talked to building officials and told them not to issue any building permits for the tower because they won't have proper zoning. They have to get a special use permit to do what they're doing because they're building a telecommunications tower. And so the property owner will be notified, as will the AT&amp;T representative, and there'll be no further building. Now, they have a right to appeal that determination. They have to do that within 30 days, appeal to the board zoning appeals, and then we'll see what happens. But I'm confident that we can withstand any challenge because of the evidence that's there, that they're current, that they're building a tower for telecommunications. Now, the other issue is zone is our ordinance, and we've talked with Derry, and Derry's staff has done some research and they've come up with some proposed changes to the ordinance. And what we wanna do is get the board's consensus tonight to go ahead and start advertising that change. And what we intend to do is tighten up what would be an existing structure that you can put a co-location on. And what we wanna take away would be flagpoles and private utility poles. We don't want someone to be able to come in and say, I'm building a flagpole, and then later on, put a co-location tower on there, antenna on there. And so we wanna take those type, those two uses specifically out of what would be allowed as a co-location. We would keep in public utility structures. Right now, they, it's common that they co-locate on AEP structures, on light poles that are owned by AEP. We don't control those anyway, but we think that's probably a good thing to keep up. Church steeples, silos, stadiums, things of that nature. We think those things should remain so long as you agree, but take away the private flagpoles and private utility poles. And we're also thinking, we'd like to put in a change where flagpoles would be limited in height. Right now, it's unlimited. And so limit it to 20 feet, and then if you wanna go higher, you can get a special use permit if you wanna build a bigger flagpole. But you still wouldn't be able to put an antenna on it once this change is made. So if we can get consensus to the board, we'll start that process, put it through the Planning Commission, then it'll come back to you. I think they're ready to advertise tomorrow or get the nod to the paper for tomorrow.
I know that they're also, I see them on water towers, is that?
Yeah, that would still be good.
Okay, and because I've seen a lot of different uses. So the only uses that we would be limiting are private utility poles and flagpoles.
Yeah, private flag.
Is there?
Not public flag, but private flagpoles now.
Is there any cell phone towers on any flagpoles anywhere in the county?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I don't know, I was just curious.
Nothing should be on a flagpole.
Except the flag.
Absolutely nothing should be on a flagpole.
For the reason that you say it, yeah, they shouldn't be there.
Right.
Well, what about the Pendapolis Pond situation?
Well, what happened there is it's a little bit different in that the private, the property owner came in, not AT&amp;T guy, and said, yeah, I wanna build a flagpole, what do I gotta do? And Derry rightly so, looking at the ordinance, said there's no restrictions, you can put one in. So he put a flagpole in. Now, nothing's going on since, but the AT&amp;T guy's saying, I'm gonna go on that now. So whether he does or not, but this one's a lot different. You had the AT&amp;T guy coming in saying he's putting a flagpole on there. You had the contractor saying, I'm digging this hole to put a telecommunications tower on there. So like Mr. Hopkins said, they're building that thing to hold a tower, to hold an antenna, to hold equipment. It's not being built to hold a flag.
So at the Pendapolis Pond, there isn't?
It's not up there at this point, no.
Okay, but there's.
The flagpole's up.
But there's nothing to prevent them from doing it unless we pass.
We make this change.
This before they do it.
Yes, that would prevent that from making this change. But make this change or not make this change, we wanna shut down Wright's Way because it's clearly a circumvention of the ordinance.
Marty?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question?
All right.
In order to co-locate, the person that wants to have, you know, the co-location, is there anything there that we can really be involved in, such as a special use permit or some of those things to co-locate?
Well, you can, the only thing you can do, you don't have authority under federal law, is to require a special use permit for someone to co-locate on an existing telecommunications tower.
Okay.
You gotta allow that by right, but they have to get a building permit.
Because you've already got it there, so they, if there is a pole there, okay.
Right, now, you can change the ordinance and say, we don't want co-locating on anything other than telecommunications towers. But if you do that, then they're gonna start maybe building more towers or at least requesting to build towers. And so there's a line there or balancing act, but this guy is clear, clearly is trying to circumvent that.
Can we in any way say, if it's anything other than an existing cell tower, that they must?
Get a S U P.
Yeah.
You could do that, yes. We could add that if you want. Now, you just can't do an S U P with existing tower, tug me to get stuff.
It has to be future.
Let me ask one question if I can. And that has to do, I'm interested in what can be on a pole with a flag. And my understanding is?
Nothing.
Nothing but another flag, and it has to be underneath the, of the United States one. So I'm wondering if there's a law set down somewhere that says if this is a, if this is a tower or a flagpole, and it's got a flag on it?
Right.
Is there anything that they, by right, can do?
Yeah, under our ordinance is no, but I can check and see under state law. I know there's state law requirements as to order of flags and like, you know, the order that they go, or it'll half-mass and not half-mass, stuff like that, how they fly. But I'm not sure about, you know, what Mr. Russler talked about, but we can check. I don't know whether that's just proper etiquette or statute.
And I'm not real sure either, but I'm thinking that that flag needs to be, maybe not every day, but see, that flag has got to be able to travel up and down that pole in order to take care of that flag.
I agree.
And that could be, that could knock it in the head right there, just the fact that, you know, you can't put nothing there that this flagpole can't come up and down front.
I think the issue though is that you go to build a flagpole and never fly a flag on it. You could say it's a flagpole, and then just take the flag down, never fly a flag again, and then you could put something, or you could extend it.
Right.
So I think this is what the issue, this is what the ordinance is.
Yeah, we're trying to close that and also regulate how high flagpoles go.
And I'm not.
Without an S U P.
And I guess for me personally, I don't have a problem. It doesn't sound like there are any flagpoles being used. If we wanna end that regulation, I'm in favor of that. I don't know that, I'm personally in favor of starting to regulate flagpoles and do those things. I want people to be able to fly their flags.
Yeah, but we don't have to yet, but the other one's a little more.
Right. To me, there's a difference. Let's take care of it. And then, can I ask a question? I'm not a technology person. You know, I know there's usually a gold ball at the top of the flag. Could you put a telecommunications device that would be broadcasting in that gold ball and it work? I mean, would that help cell phones?
I don't know, it's a good question. I think they can put stuff inside.
I don't know. I just don't know enough because you could have a flagpole that looks perfect and it works without, you know, harming anything. It looks good.
If you hide it inside.
And you'd be hidden inside. And so that's the only other thing that maybe that we do it by special use permit for flagpoles.
You still have to have your electronics and all that in there. You've gotta have a little house on the bottom.
Okay, and like I said, I don't know enough about this, and that's why I wanted to talk about it.
Like I said, I just don't think anything belongs on a flagpole but a flag. And as far as I'm concerned, that's kind of a sacred thing. I mean, that's our flag. If you're flying the United States flag and the Virginia flag, then those are things that are symbolic of our country, and I think that they should not in any way be part of a telecommunications tower. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
Just one last thing. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, first of all, and also to the citizens around Wright's Way and how quickly the government responded.
Thank you.
The staff responded to this, and, you know, we brought this to our agenda. What I'd like to suggest is that we go ahead and advertise the ordinances as Marty has suggested, and then if we decide we wanna tweak them a little bit after the public hearing or at the public hearing, I think we can go ahead and do that. I think it's important that we go ahead and move this and close this loophole as quickly as possible, though.
Again, I would like to say the same thing. I thank you, Mr. Russler. We talked, and I talked with some of the other people too, but I really do appreciate the Planning Department, Derry, the administration, everybody else who, and particularly, as I was talking to some of you gentlemen and ladies, that we said when our attorney would review it, he would then give us the directions that we were to go. Thank you, Marty, for doing that and for being so quick to help us.
Yeah, I mean, Derry really deserves a lot of credit. She jumped right on it, she went out there. And in fact, she's even supposed to be off this week.
Yeah, she's on vacation this week, but she's still covering it.
Yeah.
Derry's on vacation this week, but she's still covering it for us.
I know, I know, she did.
She's been very diligent. But what I was gonna say is, we'll get the, it's gonna go to the paper tomorrow for advertisement, and so we'll send all the board members a copy of the ordinance change, and then it'll go to the Planning Commission within, I guess, a couple weeks.
Well, we need to have a motion after the work session to do that?
No, I think just a nod of consensus would be fine, that you guys are okay, that we're just advertising. And like Matt said, you'll have the opportunity to tweak it in the process.
I believe we have consensus here.
I'd just like, the only comment I'd like to add was to thank the people, the citizens for alerting us because the phone call I got, I knew nothing about it, absolutely nothing. So it was great to find out and be able to have our planning department, as was said, act quickly. But thank the citizens for letting us know, because we honestly did not know.
If you look at where that pole is going, it is right in the middle of, I don't know how many different homes. I mean, they're just, it's a community, and lots of homes are there. And right in the middle of it goes this thing. So again, thanks to everybody who was a part of it.
That's right.
This was all new to me until I saw the first email, I think, from Matt, and that was in the last week.
Yes, sir, it was Thursday.
So I again commend our staff and everybody involved, and thank the citizens for bringing this to us. And I'm glad we can do something about it.
We appreciate you for getting on top of it.
You're very welcome. And these are the people that did it, so. All right, if that's all on that issue, why don't we move to the next one?
We'll go back to the first one, the school.
Yeah, School Resource Officer Grant.
Sheriff Witt, if you could, if you guys could come up. We had the opportunity a couple of months ago to consider applying for a school resource officer grant for several of the schools. Honestly thought that, knowing the amount of competition that we would be up against, that it was probably a long shot that we would be considered. But should've known better, these guys do first-class work and put together grant proposals, and we received notice last week that we have been awarded, we've been awarded a grant should the, should the board want to accept that grant. And so I was out of town on vacation, but I did ask that you guys be here tonight to address the board, let them know what the process was. I don't know that we've even received any formal notification yet, is that correct?
No.
Okay, I'll turn it over and let you just describe a little bit about the process and what you know.
I'm gonna be very brief in my description of the process because Lieutenant Bowyer he was the guiding force on all of my grant applications, and he led us through the high school resource officers, the middle school resource officers. And then when Sandy Hook occurred, obviously, there was some federal money got handed down to the Commonwealth of Virginia for school resource officers in our elementary schools. Now, that sounds weird, but is that a situation where perhaps if a school resource officer was at Sandy Hook, that he could've diverted or saved any lives that particular day? With that being said, we applied for, as sheriff, we applied for all the schools that were outside the two-town limits, the Christiansburg and Blacksburg, so all the elementary schools.
Total of four?
Total of four. And looking on the grant awards approval dated 6/9/2013, we were awarded four, but we do not have the letter of congratulations or condolences or whatever case may be as it relates to that. It's not on the same platform and program as is four years funded, and then the obligation to the county to pick them up for one year and then drop them, whatever. Now, we'll turn it over to Lieutenant Bowyer and let him describe all that to you. And if you want figures, then we can give you figures. I'll pass it.
It'd probably be good just for them to have.
Okay, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. As stated, we applied for four school resource officer grants through the Department of Criminal Justice Services. The specific grant applications were for one SRO at Auburn Elementary School, Bellevue Elementary School, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, and Price's Fork Elementary School. And as Sheriff Witt stated, we have not received the award documents from the Department of Criminal Justice Services yet. Based on the grant awards approved listing that I found today on DCJS's website, we should be getting one for each of the four elementary schools. I've kinda given you a short synopsis of what it's gonna cost. The figures that are represented on that, on those pages that the sheriff just gave you is for each individual SRO position. So when you look at it, if we are awarded four, then you can multiply those figures by four, is what we are tentatively looking at until we get the award documents and get into, you know, if you all approve those, then we'll look at what we, what the final tally is that it's gonna cost the county. But there, we've laid out some necessities that are not grant-funded, equipment, uniforms, vehicle, training, such as that, weapons. There's, that gives you kind of an estimate. The cost for the first year is extremely high because of the needs for the officers. Should you elect to fund this, then the reason year one is so high is because of those additional needs. They will need those to effectively do their jobs. Now, this is a stair-step grant program. They're only gonna pay based on the Education Department's composite index. Then, based on those figures, the second year, the state funding for the grant will decrease by 25%, and the county's obligation will increase by 25%. Year three, the state funding for the grant will be reduced by 50%, and again, the county will be responsible for 50% more. Fourth year, it'll be reduced by 75% from state funding, and local funding will then increase by 75%. because they're only paying up to $50,000 for the, the grant. And that includes the grant amount, the state funding, and the local match. There are some components on page two that outline what the SRO must be. I won't read those unless you just want me to, but these outline exactly, you know, the qualifications of the SRO that is assigned to each school should you decide to accept these awards when they come in. The SRO, of course, will be assigned to one either, in this case, it'll be one elementary school, and that SRO will be specifically assigned to that school. And again, right now, the grant applications were for Auburn Elementary, Bellevue Elementary, Eastern Montgomery Elementary, and Price's Fork Elementary School.
And Lieutenant, and if I can just add, the towns currently provide resource officers in the high schools and middle schools that are within the towns.
Yes, sir.
And the towns also, should they have decided to do this, could've applied for grant funding for SROs in the elementary schools in the towns if they had wanted to.
If they had wanted to. I do not understand what the status is. Based on the listing that we got off of DCJS's website today, neither town was awarded an SRO grant for the elementary schools. And of course, you know, I may go back, the, this program wasn't exactly just for elementary schools. It was for schools that did not currently have an SRO. So we applied for the middle school, or the elementary schools.
We wanted to bring this to you tonight. This is an opportunity, should the board elect, to choose that opportunity once we get more information on these grants, to provide an SRO in the elementary schools. It doesn't come without a cost, as Lieutenant Boyer's pointed out. You know, the first year especially, even though it's a 75-25, we've still got the cost of the equipment and the outfit for each deputy. So it doesn't come without a cost. But we wanted to make the board aware of this and get your thoughts on whether, on what direction you may want to take once we find out more information.
I've got a question too, if I could. What you were calling the number one is actually the number two, according to what I read here. It's the second, third, and fourth year. Number one, there's, nothing says how much it's gonna cost you.
Yes, sir. It's actually for the first year grant funding, it's at the top, second period.
Is that $63,948?
No, sir. It's, the grant will actually pay, the state funding will be $29,734. State funding first year, the cash match that the county will have to obligate is $20,266. And then you do your 25% decrease, increase, 50% based on the year, based on those figures. So year two, we will get 25% less funding off of the $29,734 from state funding, and the county will have to pick up 25% more of $20,266.
And this is for four?
Three years, yes, sir.
How many officers?
Four.
The $63,948 in cost to the county, is that in addition to the $20,000?
Yes, sir. That is in addition, and that, that...
It's about $84,000.
No, sir. Oh, well, yes, sir.
And is that for all four, or is it for one?
That's, that's one.
So...
Well, actually, the 63 should include the $20,266, the cash match. That $63,000 will figure in, the $20,000 is figured into that $63,000.
Yeah, the first, the first year, it's $63,948 because that includes the cost of capital. The second year, the county's requirement is the $20,266 plus 25% more. So, yeah, the first year is, the first year is such a large figure because of the capital costs involved. But, but the, a good point to be made there is this grant does not cover 100% of the salary the first year. It only covers $29,734 of the $50,000.
Yeah, it still leaves $64,000 per, per, about quarter of a million dollars.
If you were to, if you were to want to proceed with this grant, that first year, we would have to appropriate 245, 250,000.
Yeah, 250,000.
Yes, sir.
Quarter of a million dollars.
And that's, that's a whole lot of money.
Yes, sir.
But it goes four years, the next year, and the next year, and the next year.
Well, for the initial, yeah, the initial year is a whole lot of money because you have to outfit them with the equipment and everything, put your wood.
The second year would be about $100,000 because it'd be the $20,266 times four plus 25%.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
What, what is, what is the total rule? When all this is all done and done, I guesstimate, is what, I guess?
It's all four school resource officers in school, total county. And if you're asking the dollar figure, would you go back and calculate that and that?
I just, I just wanna, you know, even though it costs a whole lot more the first year for things they need, well, by the end of the time this runs out, it's about time they need these things again. On top of, I'm just looking, I just wanna see what in reality, I'm not saying that I'm against it. I just wanna know what, what they both facts are.
Well, and what you're doing with these grants, and that's, again, the reason we wanted to talk about it in work session, is you're basically bringing on board four additional officers to be SROs. Now, at the end of the four years, when that grant goes away, they're 100% county. So you're basically saying, if you're interested in this grant, that, you know, your thoughts are at the end of four years, we'll have four additional FTEs in the sheriff's office. Now, they would be elementary school SROs, but, I mean, that's, that's why we needed y'all to talk about this.
Just two brief informational questions. Do the middle and high schools in the county currently have SROs?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yeah, we have SROs at Eastern Montgomery, Auburn High Schools, and Shaw School, Middle School, and Auburn Elementary School.
Okay. And second question is, just a technical one, will the grant be administered through the sheriff's office? So the grant will come from the state to the, or the federal money will come directly to the sheriff's office? Or will, will it go to the county?
I have a couple of questions. Like, my first one is, like, is the school board aware of this?
They are aware that we've applied for the grants. And they are aware that one, two, three, or four have been approved. Because nobody knows how many have been approved officially until we get the award documents.
So this person would stay at the elementary school all day, wouldn't be pulled away for other duties, would be there?
Yeah, they cannot be.
They're school-specific based on, based on the application.
Now, here's my other problem, and you know I'm gonna bring this up, but being an elementary school teacher, there are four schools in Blacksburg and three in Christiansburg that would, because they're within the town limits, would not have the same, if we went with this, would not have the same coverage, but yet their people from Blacksburg and Christiansburg would be paying for this coverage for the county schools. And I guess, I guess, speaking as elementary teacher, I have a problem with it not being for everyone.
I agree with you about that.
I mean, because it's like people...
That's just part of the, of the grant. We, they tell, we apply for them for the school.
Right. And I'm very proud of what you all did because you've covered the county. But I guess what I'm having an issue with is we're leaving seven elementary schools without anything. And I guess I have to speak for those children and for those schools because no one else here maybe feels the same way I do about it. But I feel very passionate about it because I've been, I've put my kids in closets, and I stayed after school until six o'clock when we were all locked in. And the first thing I like to see are those Blacksburg officers when they come to my school. I like them in my school. Maybe I'm in the minority, but I feel funny if we would go ahead and do this and not have seven of our schools covered. It just doesn't sit well with me. And it's not your fault at all. I wish you'd gotten enough to, to cover everyone. I'm not sure why Blacksburg and Christiansburg, maybe they have plans or just have enough money to put officers in. I don't know.
Don't think...
Well...
I would think that, I would think that if I was the chief of Blacksburg and I wanted to put them in longer schools, I would, and I'd supply the school resource officer to the high school, middle school, I would apply for a grant to put them in my elementary schools in my town. And the same with Christiansburg. But they're probably not applying for, for the grant for the simple reason, I have to look at this down the road, when we, three, four years down the road, when we accept the full cost of this, that's a whole lot of money. So no more grants, we take it out of, out of taxpills money. The initial, I can understand the initial amount to equip them and everything, but in three or four years, I guess their automobiles would wear out. We gotta replace them on five, six years, whenever. And the uniforms wear out, you know. The guns don't worry out, but they might need to be updated at a particular time. But the vehicle replacement, I guess you could probably get six, seven years out of school resource officer's vehicle or longer. So that's quite a bit to try to digest. I mean, I understand the feeling of, of being safe in a school and some of the things that's happening across this nation and so forth, but everything comes at a cost.
I appreciate it.
A couple of points, and one, hopefully, Blacksburg and Christiansburg may have applied for the same grants. I don't know whether they did or not. But some of the county schools are way out.
Right.
And they're not where the response time is going to be, two or three minutes. It may be 15 minutes. If, let's say we have an incident over on the Giles side, and you get officers pulled, or deputies pulled over there, and they have to respond to something in Shawsville, it may be a 20-minute drive. And so I do understand what Mary's saying. There's tax dollars being spent from Christiansburg residents, and there's tax dollars being spent by Blacksburg residents. But there are Christiansburg residents who do go to Bellevue schools. And there, I don't know if they're, I guess, the merrimack in the, there may be Blacksburg...
There are Blacksburg kids.
Kids that go to Price's Fork. So that there are taxpayer dollars from Blacksburg and Christiansburg going to pay for these resource officers. Maybe it's not as big a population, but there is a portion of it. But I, and there's no way we couldn't put some of the resource officers in some of the used vehicles, Sheriff? Just checking.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, it looks like there are new vehicles. Is there any way that we, because a resource officer's not patrolling as much, is there any way that we could try to look at, instead of a brand-new vehicle, a used vehicle, or working through some of the older road officer vehicles or the like?
That's what we currently do now, and I have three, or possibly four, sitting in the county garage right now that's already been stripped of decals. And one of those four has already sold at auction, so.
Okay.
With our new vehicles we got, we pushed down our 200,000-mile vehicles that were still in service, and they went out for auction.
Never hurts to talk about something.
No, sir. It doesn't. It doesn't. But with that being said, I know that carrying insurance on a vehicle that's just sitting somewhere is expensive to the county. And we want to roll over all the vehicles, especially when they're cautious more to keep them on the road than they are worthy of being on the road. And a lot of times, you can get a whole lot from putting them out in civil, put them out with school resource officers and things like that, and we'd do that. Whatever opportunity we get. But these vehicles are sitting, I wouldn't know if they'd anyone, and I don't know why anybody wants them other than maybe junk out parts.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Perkins, answer.
Is there any other kind of federal monies that will be coming for school safety or in the gun safety business?
I know Lieutenant Boyer and those, you guys watch for every opportunity. And I, we haven't seen anything.
This was federal money coming to the state. And I'm on, I guess, there's a list out there somewhere. I don't have a problem with it. And I forward it straight to anyone that has anything to do, whatever, like crime prevention. We just received a $61,000 grant for, from Department of Juvenile Justice Services for a software package, which helps us track crime and where it's occurring so we can better focus our resources. And it will also interface with Blacksburg and Christiansburg. But this, this is an opportunity that we saw, and you never know until you make application. And I wasn't legal on set back then. There's an opportunity here. I'm not gonna take it. And unknowing to me exactly, and any of us, exactly what the full upfront cost was gonna be, so we really got into this thing. And unfortunately, we had to put it on our shoulders to make that decision. And I'll set, be very appreciative of whatever your decisions are, just a consideration of what we've done. If you'd use that.
Craig, is, is this something that you can talk with the two towns about, their, their managers, and see if there is some way that things can be worked out to cooperate in trying to place resource officers in the town elementary schools?
Well, we can certainly have that conversation. I think if I have that conversation, the two-town managers are gonna look at me and say, "Well, what's the county willing to do to help accommodate that?"
Well, I don't think we know until we know.
Well, I agree. And, but the one thing that, and I've mentioned that earlier, is the sheriff and Lieutenant Boyer and I met early on to talk about whether we should even apply for this or not. And the decision, I told them, I said, "I think we should go for it. Let's see if, let's see." I mean, we knew it was gonna be competitive, but as far as I know, and I think the sheriff concurred with this, I don't know that the two towns even applied for this grant. So if they didn't even ask for it, I'm not sure.
What was the deadline for the grants?
It was, do you remember when the deadline was that these had to be in, wasn't it April? It's been several months ago.
Yes, it has been. I don't remember.
That means that...
I'm setting the menu up for you.
Even if the, if the two towns became interested over the conversation, they'd have missed the deadline.
They've missed the opportunity.
I wasn't thinking about a grant. I'm just talking about flat-out money. I'm not talking about a grant. Now, you know, if it comes up or there's something else, we'll let them do it. But I'm talking about money and knowing how much, as Mary said, town residents are paying for this. So can we look to the towns to work with us on a 50-50 basis? Because figure out how much the county, the town citizens are paying for this to go through. Then should they not be reaping the benefits too if we go with this? I mean, it's just money. There's no grant money.
Do the towns have any officers in elementary schools?
No.
No, just middle.
They didn't have high school.
You only had anyone in without a falling branch at elementary school because of the parking lot problem. They admitted an officer.
Christiansburg.
Christiansburg.
But they decided they would not continue to provide somebody there.
They did discontinue, I guess.
Well, I mean, I guess, when I think of Blacksburg, I think of Morva, and I think of April 16th. This happened in town. I don't know. I, I just, maybe I'm not the most objective person to talk about this. Maybe I shouldn't talk about it because my emotion is in it, okay? And I find it is, if you're gonna talk about school safety, I want all kids to feel safe and have the same benefit, not, not selected schools, which has nothing to do with what you guys are doing. I admire what you did because you got out there and did something.
Right.
That it need to be done, and I support it. But what I'm having an issue with is I want it for all and not just for some.
Going back to Ms. Perkins' point, I'll be glad to have a conversation with the two-town managers and ask them, you know, I'll be glad to make them aware that we've been preliminary, preliminarily notified that we've received this grant for the, the elementary schools that are outside the two towns. And I'll be glad to ask them if they have any plans for addressing the SROs in the elementary schools within the two towns. And I'll be glad to bring back to the board what their answer is. But if their answer is no, then I'll need direction from you guys as to how you wanna approach that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that there has to be, well, there needs to be a willingness on the part of the towns to maybe match what the grant is, you know, is giving us. And then to have us be involved with allowing the part that we have to give, at least for the first year.
Okay, excuse me. How many elementary schools are we talking about in Blacksburg?
Yeah, Harding Avenue, Margaret Beeks, Gilbert, Lincoln, and Kips. And in Christiansburg, yeah, Falling Branch, Christiansburg Primary and Christiansburg Elementary.
So it's three in Christiansburg?
And four in Blacksburg.
Four. We're talking about possibly, including, well, seven additional to the four that they're talking about right here.
That's a lot of money.
It's, it's a heck of a lot of money.
Well, and those seven don't have any grant associated with it right now.
No, sir. They don't have any grants whatsoever.
No, and I'm just looking only...
I should get to about three-quarters of a million dollars every year. Three-quarters of a million dollars.
I'm just saying that on the first year, why not talk with them about what they'd be willing to do? I mean, it's important.
Well, I have one question. In the county, I don't know if we would be hiring Blacksburg police officers to then be resource officers. Are you saying that we would be providing deputies in the towns? I'm just curious as to what you're, because to me, they've applied for...
The county, right?
The county, and they're addressing the county schools. And I get that. And right now, the town of Blacksburg is providing for the high school and for the middle school. And right now, the town of Blacksburg is providing for the high school and for the middle school. And they're providing, the town of Christiansburg is providing for the high school and the middle school.
Right. I'm just saying, what if we offered the same amount of money that we have to have to match this county grant? Because it's all coming from county taxpayers, town taxpayers, everybody, and seeing if they are willing to match what the grant might give. I mean, it's a lot of money for the towns, and it's a lot of, they probably will say no. But at any rate, it seems to me that all the schools, even though the police departments in the towns are close to those schools, and they can be there within just a few minutes, it seems to me to, to be a fair approach to say, okay, we get to have one in every school that's an element. And then that way, if all of our elementary schools are covered and our middle and secondary are already covered, then all of our schools are covered. And that's not saying it will prevent somebody from coming in and, I don't even want to go there, you know? But what I'm saying is I think children and teachers would feel safer. Because many of our elementary schools have multiple doors to go in and out of. And usually, those are kept locked from the outside, but you can get through with pushbars, you know, to go out in case of an emergency. But they're very vulnerable. And whenever, when they, when the April 16th occurred at Tech, all of the elementary schools in Blacksburg and Christiansburg, as well as middle schools and high schools, were shut down and locked down.
Ms. Perkins, we just, we've worked with county administration, Chief Cranes and Assistant and myself by doing the school security service.
Yeah, I know you did.
Right here, once again, is an integral portion of that. Jimmy's always been a very integral portion of anything that's going on in the schools. Currently, even in, in the county elementary schools, I can't speak for what kind of, or Blacksburg, because they are the primary law enforcement agencies for that jurisdiction. Primary law enforcement for the county and the government.
Well, I think what you're doing is fine, and we probably shouldn't have gotten off on this tangent.
Well, and with that being said, we, as part of our routine patrol every day...
I know.
We check in with the schools.
Sure you do.
We have a walk-through, check-in of the principal, check-in of the front desk. If we want to go and have lunch, we want to have lunch with them, whatever case they be. And every day, regardless of where they're assigned throughout the county, they check on the schools in the county throughout the day. Not only the law enforcement and civil process services also.
Sure.
With that being said, we are making a presence. We just don't have one continuously in common place.
Right. They are all day long just assigned to a specific school.
And that's why this wouldn't be...
Right. Okay. I just, I don't know. I guess, just think maybe it should be a little bit broader, but that's something the board has to decide.
I will certainly be glad to have a conversation with the two managers about their thoughts about elementary school SROs and just get their thoughts, can bring that back to the board. Really, we don't need any action from the board tonight on this item, other than we just wanted to make you aware of it. And as we get more information, we'll share it back with you guys. And at some point, we'll have to make a decision, do we accept it or not accept it? But we can't do that till we know what we're accepting.
If we get a, notice the ground award, we'll obviously, we'll be back in the next report meeting with you to...
Thank you.
Figure out where you want to go with it.
As soon as I get that, I'll get that.
Thanks.
Thanks to both of you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank him. He did, he did all the complete work and all...
Let me, let me, can I ask you one thing?
Yes.
If you could do this. The very, I'd like to see a chart, okay? The initial year and how much it costs. You know, just like if you put a chart in like $63,000, break it out in process way. The second year with the, using the same dollars, they may change just a little bit to see how much it will be county funds the second year with this going up on all four of them, to go all the way down to year four. And then when it becomes our money, how much it will cost us?
Okay.
Is that something that you can...
I can get you close. I can't get you a dollar for dollar.
Well, it would be just pretty close. It won't be dollar for dollar, but some, something to help this board look at and says, okay, in year two, it's going to cost the county approximately this. In year three, it's going to cost the county approximately that. And in year four, you know, it's going to cost 70, you know, 75%. And then in year five, this is what the dollar amount will be. And I think it will help us...
In general assembly, you're fleet enough that regardless of awards and state mandates, a lot of times, you don't get anything from states.
Right, right.
And one thing that I do also want to mention, man, is that this grant has been approved for this year. It is a competitive process. We will have to reapply year two to see if they fund, if there's money available on the state level to fund it. And we won't know that until then. Year three, year four is the same way. We have to reapply each year. And right now, we don't, we're not guaranteed any funding past what we will receive when we receive the award documents.
So the first year, we could crank in approximately 65, $63,000 per officer. And then the second year, they may not get a dime. It's rare, you know?
Yeah, it's rare that that would happen, but it is possible.
Yeah.
So, you know, you should be aware, you know, this is a competitive process with no guaranteed funding after the initial award document.
So the whole time, you have the officers in place, the first year, I guess you're collecting data and justifications for reapplying?
Yes, ma'am.
And how it's working and that kind of...
Yes, ma'am.
Makes sense.
I think the reason we were very, very successful in, you know, works for, for the possibility of four years under this program, or year at a time under this program, is the work that Jimmy's been doing over the years. I mean, he is so timely in everything that he does as far as notices to the state and all the octantations of, of everything that needs to go back under the program, he notifies the state. Every grant we have, he stays on, right, right on top of to the penny. And he's got his little sign here, sign here, sign here for me, as much as I don't like them, but he has them, and I review them and I sign them. Yeah, he keeps us on track there. We're very timely. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Applaud your efforts.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Go down to number two, split voting precincts.
Marty?
Unless we do with that, if anybody want to discuss anything further about the grants?
On that one, I'll just bring back information as I get it. And once we know the grant details, we'll get back to you. Marty, do you want to do the split voting?
Yeah, I'll lead the discussion again. Supervisor Gabriel asked that we put on work session an update or status on the split voting precincts. If you remember back, I guess sometime in November of last year, prior to the General Assembly, we put together a package asking the, through Legislative Services, and they were the ones that were kind of coordinating it with the other localities, about trying to remedy some of the split precincts. And what we mean by that are precincts that have either multiple house districts, they have two house districts instead of one, so then you have two different ballots, or they have, the biggest problem we have is where you have towns, you have a town ballot in part of the precinct and a town ballot not in the other part of the precinct. Most of our splits are around the two towns. And so we got together a planning, we put together a package, wherein those, these are all technical changes, meaning very few voters were being moved out of precincts, maybe 10 or 12 at a time, and it dealt with the three-house districts. There was nothing in the Senate districts, but there were the three-house districts that had the problem. Like I said, it was all around the town of Christiansburg and town of Blacksburg. We submitted it, we didn't think there'd be any problem. And then the House of Delegates approved it 100 to nothing. These are all the amendments, which included ours. Then it went to the Senate, and the Senate then messed around with it. And it went from technical changes to a true redistricting in some of the areas, not including our area, but some of the areas in Virginia. And it went back to the House, and the House ruled, that you probably remember, ruled that it wasn't germane, and so it died. And so the splits are still there. We talked with Delegate Raj and Delegate Yost, and they both said that they would carry a new change for the upcoming session, if we want to get those changed. And they also said we could do it, we could put a bill in just for us. That way, we'd possibly avoid any entanglement with any problems with other areas of Virginia. And they both said they'd be willing to carry a bill to make those changes. And like I said, they're very minor, and if you guys want, I think we forwarded to you, last time we did them, we can send them out again. I don't think they'll change much. But it's up to the board if you want, want staff to communicate with the two delegates and ask for them to do that.
Two delegates and both senators, I guess?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it would make sense to go ahead and do a, the House and Senate side.
We don't need to contact a B.
Oh, B, that would be great.
We can, yes.
I mean, don't you think they should all be involved in it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think it'll save a lot of confusion, I hope this, that we can, we can push this.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody all right?
You okay, Carol?
Yeah. We'll move forward.
All right, we'll, we'll make sure that happens.
Yep.
All right, the next item is the Allegheny Green Box site.
This is an item that we added to the work session at the request of Supervisor Gabriel. And for those of you that have been on the board a while, you know this has been discussed several times before. There's been various discussions. Did they close it up on you, Carol?
We may not have any visual. I can figure out how to open the laptop.
Here comes Josh to the rescue.
Got it. Maybe all you needed to do was mention his name.
Josh is, there it goes. We do have a video of, for those of you that may have never been to the Allegheny Springs site, we had staff go out today and actually film the site and the location, so you can get a little familiarity with where it is and how this site differs from the other convenience sites that we have in the county.
I think many of you have been to the site. On the road viewer's trip, we stopped a number of times, but I think there's some of you who have not, who don't know exactly where it's located. And we've also had some questions and a lot of information going back and forth about where it is and what's there. And how far is it from the Floyd County line? How far is it from somewhere else? So this video is about a couple minutes, which, when you're looking at it, seems like it's a lot longer, and I hope nobody gets carsick, because you sort of feel like you're in a vehicle. But we thought I'd give everybody the same orientation about where it is. It was shot today, so it's after a weekend. It hadn't been picked up, so it's probably the worst case of what it looks like usually. And hopefully, this will just give you some orientation. There's Meadow Brook from where we're starting.
Yeah, this was a two-person thing, one driver, one camera person.
It's going too fast, I hear you say. I drove that to the stadium just to make sure what was going on.
So we did want to go out and verify, like, like the video shows, it's a little less than five miles from, from the Meadow Brook Center down to the site. It's about three miles from the site to the Floyd County line. Couple of concerns that we've, we've discussed previously is, this is the only unattended site that we have. It's also the only site where we utilize open green boxes to collect whatever. It's not segregated into solid waste recyclables, whatnot. As you saw from the video, it, it does get a lot of use. The site does have a lot of use when we manned the site some time ago. I can't remember how long ago that was. The, the usage actually went, the tonnage actually went down. Now, the question then was, well, do you think that's because Floyd County residents were using it and stopped using it? There's really no way to know, because we did an ID people before and after to determine where the, the waste was coming from. Staff's position on this site has been that because it's the only open green box site in the county, we would like to see something different go on there, simply because, one, we have to make, well, the county maintains a vehicle just to pick up those green boxes and several others. Secondly, which has become more of a concern, especially now that we're spending as much time with stormwater and evaluating runoff and other issues, is that's on a, that's on a leased parcel of property. We don't own that property. We lease it, and it's right beside the creek. And my fear is, because it's an unmanned site, there, there aren't regu, it's not regulated as to what's brought in there. And if something's brought in there that creates an environmental hazard, not only on the site, but potentially into the creek, then we've got a big issue with that. I know there was information sent out about the proximity of the other convenience sites to this one, and discussion about would those sites be sufficient? That's really a board decision as to whether you want a site or not. But our, the staff's recommendation is if, if that site is eliminated and the board's, or if the board wants to maintain a site in that area, then staff's recommendation would be that you establish another convenience site on county property so that we could regulate it and maintain it properly and get away from those green boxes. That's not, that's not the least expensive solution. Matter of fact, that would be a more expensive solution. But if there is a concern about providing service to the residents in that area, then I think that's the approach we would recommend. But this has come up, I know it's come up at least twice since I've been here, and I've been here four years. And I think the, the history, as we went back, is it's come up five or six times. We want to make sure we're providing service to all our citizens, but, you know, staff's directive has always been to try to do it in the most cost-effective manner possible. So that's a decision that we need some input from you guys on how you want to address it.
Is it any property there in the proximity of that site that could be developed as a convenient collection point?
I think the answer to that is we've identified some property. We've not negotiated with anybody. We haven't even talked to them. But we've identified other property in that area that could potentially be. Is that a fair statement, Steve? That could potentially be developed, but we've not had any discussion with anybody at this point. We, what's, what's, what's our current arrangement with the property owner for the Allegheny Springs site?
The current one is $4,200 a year for 0.2 acres. His arrangement is he locks the site, unlocks the site, and pushes snow off of it. That's pretty much the arrangement we have with Mr. Sisson. We've looked at some other properties between the Allegheny site and let's say the Meadow Brook Library closer to the library, which would encompass more of the Shawville residents, but still encompass the five mile circle that we use as a magic number. So, but we, as far as contacting the property owner, Carol and I spoke about it last week. She's familiar with the person, might be able to facilitate a conversation with him, but you think so?
What kind of space do we need?
At the minimum, it's three quarters of an acre if you're going to do a full-size consolidated site. Now, Mr. Pliss, to give you a good example, the one in your district is a full acre. Plum Creek is a full acre. And we've got some smaller sites.
Pilot's on an acre, isn't it?
Oh, no, Pilot's about that big.
Yeah. And Colbank Hollow's fairly small, too. Colbank Hollow.
Colbank Hollow's about a half acre. And it's on a waterway, but it is piped. You know, everything is covered with the pipe. And your chances of having a hazardous spill with the site attendants there really drops. You know, we actually did have a hazardous spill. It wasn't a spill, but somebody dropped off some chemical at the Allegheny site. It costs us a couple thousand dollars, but thank goodness they were still in the barrels just to get them out of there. But if you did spill it, it's always a concern.
So we'd be looking for about a half an acre of land to be comfortable?
Twenty and a half acre and an acre.
Yeah, about three quarters, I think, would be what you would need to, I like, appreciate what you do. I like a little bit of potential growth in there. You remember your site in your district, we had all kinds of space and now we're all stacked together.
Stacked together because we're using it so much, yeah. And yet we take in a lot of stuff in Pilot, too, and that's.
Exactly.
And that's a pretty heavily used site, if I recall the list, so.
And these are great sites for citizens actually, Allegheny, if they had one, they deserved a site like this, which is what they have right now. But as Mr. Metis says, it's got a dollar figure up to it. Or we can keep bringing it up every two years.
I've got several things, several things to say. I'll just start with what he just left off on. The same man has complained about that site, it's the same person every time. But he did write a retraction, I think I sent it in to Mr. Metis, that he misspoke and he should not have said anything. He would like to see some flowers or something around it to make it look a little better, but he certainly didn't mean to take the site away. Another thing, the site out at Rogers, that's on a creek. The creek runs right in front of it.
Down the road.
Sure does, all the time. So, you know, and that's probably the most crowded site we've got anywhere. And who made this thing out that says Allegheny/Pilot? You can't hardly get to Pilot from Allegheny. You know, that's shows how much attention was paid to this because in here somewhere it also says that it's four, either four or five miles to the site over on Wayside. Well, I'm here to tell you, I wrote it today. Wrote it just as I was almost late getting here. From that box over there to the top of Christianburg Mountain is 6.8 miles. The other mile down to the site then makes it 7.8 miles that someone would have to come from that site in order to be at this site. Everybody keeps talking about it'd be a good place for them to make them come. Well, I drove it this evening and if you go in there and turn to Meadow Brook and go up to the site, turn around and come back down and go up George's Run, the only other paved road that they got to get out of there, to the top of Christianburg Mountain, it takes about 35 minutes. That's a pretty good haul for people to have to go every time they want to put trash away. Next thing. Allegheny, according to this, is 1.24 tons. Allegheny and McCoy seems to be the sites used the least. McCoy is 1.58 tons. McCoy and Price's Fork are about the same distance, only they're a little closer, if I'm not mistaken, to each other than Allegheny and Wayside are. So if you're going to get rid of one, you damn sure better get rid of two. Close it. They're basically the same and one people shouldn't be treated no different than the other people.
Okay, well, Gary, down there where it is now, like if we could get a piece of land and actually put a site on it, people would use it, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, to me, I mean personally, I think that's the answer because it's always been sticking out there like a sore thumb. And you know, it's 2013 and I think we should be providing the same service for everybody to treat people equally.
Well, and that, I'll be honest, that's, as staff has thought about this, I mean, if the concern is providing service to all the residents and the concern is that there needs to be a site available, you know, if the board wishes to do that, I think it makes sense to look at doing a full consolidated site down there, provide the same amenities that we provide at the other sites. And that still lets us get out of the green box business, which is the concern we've had for the last two years is we're holding a truck together with duct tape and whatever else we can find. And when that truck finally dies, we're either going to, we're going to have to contract with somebody, which is usually a couple thousand dollars a month to pick all those boxes up, or we're going to have to buy a truck.
Well, I'm certainly not against a different site. I don't have a problem with that, as long as it's on up in that Allegheny area. I'd say I don't, I do not have a problem with it. Because, you know, y'all's measurements and mine is a little bit different because I was on the road turning into Meadow Brook when I hit my reset on my thing to know how far I was going. And I come up with 5.1 miles, so to the site going down there. Of course, they can come out of there, 5.1 miles, they're still four to five miles away from either site.
Right.
And about six or seven miles down to the one down towards the Fett.
And Carol, you may be going to address this, but I know the map that has the circles on it that we did some years ago, those miles are, as I call it.
It's a radius.
There's the crow.
The crow flies.
Yeah, it's the crow flies, not.
Not down the road, right? It's just a radius.
No, it's, I know, it's 7.8 miles if you're going the way a car has to go.
The one thing I wanted to address was the issue about the Allegheny/Pilot and it's on one of the documents in yellow. What that's talking about, it's not trying to combine Allegheny and Pilot site. It was the pilot program where we put staff at the Allegheny Green Box site for that three-month period. And it just shows what was collected during that pilot program. It wasn't attempting to address combining Allegheny and Pilot at all.
Thought you just can't get there from there.
I thought, you must have thought we lost our minds.
Okay. Thank you, Carol, because I did, I was looking at that, too, and went, okay.
I just think we pursue finding some land down there that y'all have an idea about and making it a full consolidated convenience site. And then we can do away with, I guess it's antique trucks, so whatever, don't have to have that part. It's going to cost us a little money, but we'll get a little bit off of recycling and so forth, and then the place will be kept neat and clean.
You know, I wouldn't even care if you adjusted the hours. I think all of them could have some hour adjustments to help pay for it. I mean, that.
Well, I appreciate that because that's.
That would seem to be the way to help with the money side of it.
Yes, sir.
Would be to have some days which you limit the hours.
Well, I think staff would be very supportive of getting out of the green box business and being able to retire that truck. I mean, when that truck picks the box up here, he's coming in a lot of days the same dime I am. And when he backs up and leaves, there's a trail of hydraulic fluid behind the trunk and it's, I mean, it's time for us to do something with that. And we're not saying that this current green box site is the only site that has the potential for runoff. We have several that have potential for runoff, but the difference is, as Mr. Phillips said a minute ago, is with site attendants at the other sites, we can more closely monitor what's going on. At that green box site, if somebody just comes in on a Saturday night or Sunday morning and drops something off and we don't find it till Monday afternoon, we've got a problem.
Oh, yeah, and you end up advocating as much as only two years ago that we should put at least a camera down there.
Yes, sir.
That would have been the cheapest way out, but you still would have had the ugly site.
Well, and somebody would have to be the trash police.
Look at the cam, look at the footage all day long.
But there are possibly some sites, like down there, pretty, like there, on the Shawville side of George's Run might be a site that would work and that, I think those folks have had a divorce and stuff and it might be something you could back.
Does that help? I know Supervisor Gabriel's the one who asked for this to be.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the staff first of all for gathering all this, these, the information, the answers to my questions. A lot of that just came out of me not knowing the kind of history. A little bit of clarification is that in the very first document that was set, it had a little bit of history. It said 1993, Montgomery County combined various green box sites into centrally located consolidated collection sites. But Allegheny Springs, for whatever reasons, didn't meet the criteria deemed necessary to create a consolidated site there. Does anybody have any idea about what those criteria were and how that particular site didn't meet them?
Back in that time, there was a committee called the Green Box Committee, studied everything. We came up with seven possible locations and those were based on coroner population. And since that time, we've added more of them once. Typically, because you all are getting pressured by citizens, it's not very handy for me to travel over here. So we've added additional sites. And our last one was McCoy in your district. There wasn't one slated to go there.
When was the one in McCoy at?
Mr. Bryan, you're going to have to help me. Three years ago?
The McCoy.
It should have been about five.
It was here when I got here, so that's at least four years.
And, you know, we all, we can, as crude as it is, we based it off the map. But as Mr. Creed pointed out, it may be within five miles of radius, but it may be 10 miles of travel time. So we tweaked and I think they've worked out really well, the way they've done. And to be fair with Mr. Creed's district down there, the tonnage is only waste. It doesn't, it doesn't reflect any recycling or anything like that. We might be able to pull on the string that, so that may help that some.
I was just wanting to know if you might want to tell them what happened when the Green Box Committee decided when you have a site, wasn't you going to have a site there?
Now, we got, we got beat up pretty bad. We took them out like we were supposed to do and it looked like a war movie the next meeting we had. They crucified us for taking them out.
Yeah.
They made the things that we've had this year and last year look like baby play.
That was 20 years ago? No, 1993, so things may have changed since 1993.
I know, I know a couple of those meetings with the Green Box Committee when I think Art Long used to chair that committee, that it got so rough in the old county government center there that they had to have two deputies in there at one time. And I think they had to call, they had to call some board, too, because it was getting pretty rough with the citizens and the committee group. I think Mr. Long hit the gavel and told one guy, said, "You're out of order." And you know what the guy told him? He said, "No, no, you are out of order." I mean, I'm saying, "Oh, it's getting very breakdown now."
Well, I mean, solid waste, it means a lot to your citizens. They like these conveniences and I don't think they should be taken lightly. That's just my opinion.
That goes to really the only second question that I had was, I'm just curious how we're going to pay for this. If anybody has, we were just talking about $240,000 next year into school resource officers. Now we're going to create a whole new consolidated site on top of that. So I'm just curious how we're all going to, we're all thinking of doing it. Is everybody here advocating another tax increase for next year?
My district is taxed out, taxed out. I'll say that right now, won't be no more taxes.
Well, there will be some money that will be required to do this, you know, if we want to do that. So I'm just raising that.
Well, I don't think.
I'm glad, if I, let me just finish and then I'll be happy to. I brought this to attention, not because I have a particular agenda. I think from a fiscal standpoint, we should close it. That's my standpoint, I think we should close it. But if there is not any political will to do that, I will be outvoted and that's fine. But I'm, we absolutely need to do something because if somebody puts another barrel of something there and it gets knocked over on a Saturday and it goes in that creek, we are in deep, deep trouble. This, the state of affairs simply needs to end. And if we need to spend money on it, okay. I'm just curious how we're going to, where we're going to find that money and how we're going to pay for it.
Is it, can it be considered a one-time funding just to build it and put it there?
Well, we'll certainly have to come back to the board once we identify a parcel to put it on. And in that period of time, too, we can work up some costs. Will it cost more than what we're doing now? Yes. Will it be?
Cost-effective.
Right, yeah. I mean, in terms of, because I heard from several board members that, you know, there was the concern about the citizen service standpoint. If that's the concern, then we can certainly, I mean, it's certainly going to address it. The simple fact of getting rid of the green boxes and the expense of picking those up and whatnot will reduce some costs, to be sure. The other thing that Supervisor Creed brought up, and I'm not about to venture into that territory tonight, but I do think we probably ought to have a discussion about hours at the consolidated site sometime. So I think, I think we are more than accommodating for our citizens and maybe we need to tighten those schedules up a little bit that would allow. I think there's some ways to adjust it. If you want to know the cost, I can't tell you yet, but that's something, it will cost money, yes.
And another thing we have to look at in immediate costs if we continue the green box site is the truck, it sounds like.
Well, we're either going to be, we're either going to be buying a truck, leasing a truck, or hiring a company at some point to pick them up because that truck's.
Those trucks are not cheap.
Well, you know, I will say this and I'm going to shut up on this matter. And that is, we can close any site out there. But if you close a site, expect to try to, you're going to have to have more predators put in this deal because they ain't going to be able to pick up what's on the side of the road. And that is why we put in these things. That's why back eight, 10, 12 years ago, we were saying, this is the best thing we've ever done, is put these sites out there, no matter what it was. This is the number one thing we thought was the best thing that had ever been done in this county. And to go from there to, well, maybe we're going to shut some of them down. We want them to have really nasty dumps is what we're going to want to have if we go and shut one of them down, especially if there's not another one real handy. It's, it's just what's going to happen. It's happened before, it will happen again. You know, we've cleaned up dumps that, uncovered up some dumps that would have filled this room in this county. And I know they have, I've seen them. There used to be one on the old road down there. There used to be one on the old road down there above my, where I lived, and it was a dump, and everybody coming there and dunked their stuff, and that's just the way it was. And when they stopped that, then they started going back down to Mount Pleasant and throwing them over in that creek down there, and go down there and try to get some of them up. So, you know, you can either face it and try to work together to cut some hours if we need to, in order to get it done, and I don't think anybody will complain at all.
We cut hours here, about a year and a half ago.
Cut some holidays.
And cut holidays off. And initially, I heard people complain, and once they figured it out, having had them complain over the year. And I'm a Gary as far as...
Nobody likes it when they drive four or five miles to put your stuff in there and it's closed. But, you know, once they learn when it's closed, they don't have a problem.
I drive 7.4 miles, I think, to the nearest site, that's in Pilot. And one time I had trash in my car, and I just happened to be going to Wade's, and it was stinky trash, and I didn't want to take a tack on it, so they let me dump it in their box there. You learn pretty quick. I personally would like to see us investigate a piece of property to do it, and put up a nice site, at least the size of Pilot, because that does handle a lot of stuff. You know, if you say a half acre's what we need for proper turnaround and keeping it clean, that's fine. I don't have a problem there, but buying the property'd be less than buying the truck.
Mr. Chairman, I have a book on this. One, I'm in favor of looking for another piece of property. I think that this is not a service that we need to close down. As a crow flies, it would be easy to get there, but that's not the way this county is. It's not nice and flat. As far as payment, we had $2.8 million in growth last year in this county. I'm hoping that we're gonna have some good growth again this year. The economy hasn't gone down. It's seemed to be maintained, and then hopefully we'll be able to meet our bills and be able to do that without having to increase taxes. And so I'm hopeful on that. But I'm all in favor of having the staff start looking for a piece of property and seeing what we can find out that way that would accommodate one acre site. And as he said, let's maybe not look at a half an acre. Let's look for an acre of land at a reasonable price that isn't anywhere near, if we can afford a creek or something along those lines, that's great. But those citizens out there need to be served, and it needs to be convenient, because as someone, and Bill, and many of us have been in this county, we remember when people would just dump stuff over the bank.
That's right.
And you, whether it's going down McCoy Road and it's over those cliffs, or whether it's in Walton or Plum Creek, we all remember, and those days are gone. We don't see those dumps anymore. And so we want to make sure we continue to be convenient.
The key thing, too, is that the people around those sites have really learned to recycle. You know, recycling newspapers, plastic and so forth. All of that stuff is going into those green boxes at one time. And now, the people, even, I came with a bunch of people out of McCoy one time when they got ready to take away the green boxes down there, and the people were talking about, we want to learn how to recycle. We don't know how to recycle and everything. Now, you can watch people go in there, they take the newspapers, the plastics and so forth. So we can educate the people down there and sort of help save this earth for some of our great, great, great-grandkids when they come.
We'll be glad to bring some information back to the board as soon as we get it put together.
Can I just ask what we're gonna do in the interim? Because right now, that site's still unmanned, and it will be unstaffed until whenever we end up finding a piece of property, negotiating a contract, buying the property, setting it up. I mean, that's not gonna happen tomorrow or next week or anything like that, and it's still a problem. So what happens now?
When we manned that for the pilot project, how long did we man it?
Two months.
Two months? Did we have to...
Three months, three months.
Could we go back to, and I'm just making a suggestion for the consideration, could we go back to manning the site until we find another alternative, or will that require a lot of overtime, or...
We did that with existing staff, which kind of enriched our staff of having enough to cover all the sites. I would say if we did that, we would almost be at the point of just hiring somebody temporary to do that. Or we're gonna work them over the legal amount they can work each year.
That'd be my, that'd be my recommendation.
And you'd like to have two or three, wouldn't you?
Usually two, yeah. You know, being open six and a half days a week, that would be your biggest things trying to cover all those times.
When you're talking about dollars, I think we're getting ready to sell some property that's no use to us. That might be a good place to get some, or most of all, maybe even all the money.
And when you're saying that, you're not talking about the school property, you're talking about some of the excess pieces of property that we can't...
Access property.
I just wanted to clarify that for anyone else in the minutes.
No school property.
How long does it take to set up a site after you acquire the property? 90 days?
A lot of it depends on, of course, the power company, I know getting power in, ordering your equipment. Usually on a virgin site like this, since we don't have everything on site, you're probably looking at four, four and a half months turnaround to do it all, and hiring staff and things like that.
Any further discussion?
So what was, are we gonna look at temporarily getting somebody to...
I think we're gonna, it sounds like we're gonna look for a piece of property.
We're gonna look for a piece of property. We can bring back some cost figures on personnel to temporarily man the site until we establish a consolidated site. If that, if there's a way to cover that in the budget somehow, we'll try to do that. We always have opportunities for lapse savings from salaries, but we've tightened the budget down to a point where I don't think there's much wiggle room. So if we need to come back for an appropriation for some additional funds to cover that, we will.
I mean, if we're gonna keep the site open, then we really need somebody there until this new thing, this new site gets open. Could we cut the site hours down at that particular site? And that would limit the amount of, if we're paying an hourly wage worker or something like that, that would limit our expenses as well. I mean, it's open six and a half days right now?
Yes.
Does that site open the same hours as the consolidated sites?
If we close it a little...
We can certainly bring you some options.
I mean, I would suggest at least reducing the hours, and that would save us a little bit of money as we're hiring somebody to put out there, at least temporarily.
Yeah, but I agree with Matt, and if he comes back with some adjusted hours, as long as those hours were, it's like, so the residents would, a big, a large sign out there, open and close these times and these dates, so that people would get educated to what's open, when it's open, when it's closed. If that's what you think.
We can do that.
I really think you can get into one cheaper, quicker than that, if you can find the land. I mean, if it's a mountain, you can't, but you'd have to excavate it, but if you have some flat land, all you gotta do is go in there and get some concrete, take off a little bit of topsoil, put your four, five loads of gravel in there, you're pretty much set other than a pad that you have to pour.
Well, I do appreciate the board's direction on, I think we've gotten as good a direction tonight as we've had in all the discussions, because I know, like I said, I've been here four years, and the green box issue has been an issue in terms of long-term, what are we gonna do with that? And that has revolved around the Allegheny Springs site, so if we're changing that to a consolidated site, that answers the green box problem, so that's...
Well, yeah, as I told the gentleman up there, I'd asked 20, 25 people, and it was 25 to one. And then when he decided that he really didn't have a problem, that made 25 to one. I haven't even asked anybody else.
Okay, so we've got our direction.
Yes, sir. We'll be bringing back some information, and we'll roll on. Steve, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Steve. Now we have the fire and rescue equipment.
I believe Ms. Edmonds is gonna cover that one.
Okay, we wanted to talk to you about fire and rescue equipment funding tonight. As you're aware, one cent of the real estate tax, which equates to about $700,000, has been earmarked to cover the cost of replacing fire and rescue equipment. In the current year, '13, which is getting ready to end, a grant was awarded to replace all the air packs in all five fire departments. However, as usually happens, the grant didn't cover 100% of the cost, so in order to be able to cover 100% of the cost for all five departments, it required some additional funds. So the Fire and Rescue Commission recommended that the monies come from their FY13 fire and rescue equipment funding, so they use those monies in order to be able to pay for the air packs. Later on, it was in February of this year, the Christiansburg Fire Department requested in advance of the fiscal year '14 money of $450,000, so they could go ahead and order a truck replacement, which had been deferred for a number of years. And if you all don't know, it takes 10 months to a year to build one of these engines or trucks. So they wanted to go ahead and get that started, since it had been on the list for some time. The board agreed to that and appropriated $450,000 with the intent that it be repaid from the fiscal year '14 $700,000 allocation. If that occurs, that means they've only got left out of that allocation about $250,000 to go toward the purchase of equipment. So this past Thursday, I don't know, somehow I can't work the microphone till it works all the time, so bear with me. The Fire and Rescue Commission this past Thursday, the vehicle committee was reporting out that their top five priorities, and looking at that list, they were gonna total $2.4 million. Now, out of the $250,000 is all they've got, and as you can see, you don't get very far on this list. The replacement schedule, at $2.4 million and $250,000, won't even finish the top two out of the list. Previously, the commission had requested, and the board had agreed, to transfer, we set up in their operating budget a fuel reserve, and they did not use it this past year, so they requested that be transferred to the capital fund for equipment. So when you take the balance remaining out of '13, the $50,000 and the $250,000, you still don't have enough to get very far on this list. So the commission itself did not ask for any additional money, and they have not asked that it be forgiven, that this money not be repaid to the general fund. However, it's already in the budget, considering that most of these replacements on here are current year and years prior. I think there's one engine on there for Long, Shaw, and McCoy that was supposed to be replaced in 2007. The list is, this is the top five out of probably at least 10 more, so it would be staff's recommendation, if the board would concur, that we not ask for that to be repaid back to the general fund. We allow the full $700,000 to be used to go toward these replacements, since we're getting so far behind already on the current schedule. And that's all the information I have to present. I will say that the $680,000 per engine, there was discussion about that being the absolute worst case, and the hope that they could bring that price in based on some of the recent prices they've seen at a lot cheaper than the $680, somewhere around $550,000.
Could we add just a little bit? See, I'm in my about five and a half years, and once, and I started out as a liaison from this board to the Fire and Rescue Commission, so been with them for several years. And what had happened over the years, I think, I don't know what particular year that the board took and used bond money to buy fire trucks, all at the same time, for the various fire departments. So all of them came due at the same time. And you may not be familiar, but once a fire truck gets 20 years old, it starts affecting your ISO rating, your insurance rating for this particular area. And Chief Puck Wells had to give it to him. I asked him about this, and for about two hours, he explained all it to me, how it worked and so forth, because he said it could be a fire truck with 10,000 miles on it, but if it was a 1950...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I don't care if it's perfect working condition. And one of the main things, they said, the safety technology changes, and that's the reason why the trucks need to be updated. Now, to look at this list in, from the meeting, if we don't forgive this 450, that the Fire and Rescue and replacing vehicles is gonna get further and further behind. So we need to, I believe, we need to forgive the 450, let them have the 4700 this year so they can start addressing, replacing these vehicles.
And I would agree with what you just said, barring one thing, and that would be that we let them know that that's not to be havoc for me.
Well, they didn't ask. They did not ask. They was gonna try to tough it out, and they really, even meeting before last, they wanted me to convey to this board the appreciation and that they have for this board, for the support that they've given them. But from a management standpoint, you look at these numbers, and I'm saying, like, God, if we don't try to start addressing something now, we're gonna look at a couple of years down the road, the hole is gonna be so deep, it's gonna really take some tremendous money to try to get out.
Absolutely. I mean, they did not raise the issue, they didn't say anything about it, but I started looking at it and thought, if we don't get ahead on this, where I wouldn't want us to be is in mid-year, and then some crisis happened with it, and we're trying to come up with it. So the money is already in place, it just means they won't let it drop back to the general fund, and the list is gonna stay the same. No one else is gonna come and help replace it. It would just be the opportunity to try and get a little further down the list. And I'm bringing it to you just based on looking at the numbers and thinking, if the board concurs, it might be better planning in the long term to go ahead, and let's just leave it in place and purchase what we can purchase off the list.
Can I just ask you an accounting question? I'm just running the numbers. Explain to me, the $450,000 that was allocated, that was out of the, going to be out of the 2014 budget?
It was appropriated out of the current year fiscal '13 fund balance.
Okay.
And for it to go back to fund balance in '14, you wouldn't spend it, and it would just drop back to fund balance.
All right. And like I said, I'm a lawyer, not an accountant, so forgive me if it takes me a while to get my... So did they not spend the money on the fire truck, or did they not, did it not come in, and that's what it was, and this money would just be going back to the general fund? And they should...
No, what they would be doing is taking their $700,000, which is new money, and not spending $450,000 of that, that would drop back and repay the general fund, $450,000 that you spent out of the current year.
And that was, when we did the appropriate, the supplemental appropriation for the 450, that was the understanding that we had reached with the commission at that time? that was the understanding that we had reached with the Commission at that time, is we would advance fund, if you will, out of the fund balance, the 450, so that when they got their full 700 this year, they would in essence only spend 250, and that 450 would replenish what we had borrowed out of this year. So, it would be a wash. But, as Carol and Supervisor Brown have pointed out, the problem with that, as that's been discussed among staff, is it puts us a little bit, we're shorting the future, it's putting us further behind on some of the capital. And at the Fire and Rescue Commission meeting, I think there was some discussion about, since the $700,000 is already there, basically what you would be doing is not replenishing that 450 that was advanced.
I think I understand. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we did not discuss it at the Fire and Rescue Commission. I mean, basically, I brought it to Supervisor Brown's attention after the meeting, that we have it in place. If the Board concurs, could we go ahead and buy down this list, purely from a planning and management standpoint?
Any other discussion?
And there's really, there's really no action to be taken, other than a consensus to allow the full $700,000 to be utilized by the Fire and Rescue Commission in the upcoming year.
Absolutely.
Do we have consensus? Looks like we're okay.
Thank you. And on that one, I certainly want to recognize Carol and Supervisor Brown, because that was discussed, and I agree, if we don't, thank you for allowing that, because if you don't, it really just puts the capital needs further behind. And so, thank you. And Carol, thank you for bringing that forward.
All right. Need a motion to go out of closed session?
Second.
And moving second, roll call, please.
Mr. Gay.
Hi.
Mr. Curry.
Hi.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Platt.
Aye.
Chair of the others.
Aye. And the next item on the agenda is the County Attorney's Report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
County Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of items. First, I wanted to say thanks to the Town of Christiansburg, and also to the Town of Blacksburg and the Virginia Tech for their votes over the last year on the Joynder Study. I regret I couldn't be at the meeting last Tuesday, but was on vacation. It had been planned several months ahead of time, but my understanding is that meeting went very well, and he left. I did speak to him personally, but I also certainly wanted to recognize the work that Jerry Higgins with the Water Authority did and continues to do on behalf of the Joynder Agreement. Jerry really has a vision for the future for this county in terms of water, and through Jerry's leadership, and quite honestly, his persistence, I think this thing became a reality, and certainly hats off to him. But, I also appreciate the appointment tonight, and I'll certainly report back to you after the first meeting on Wednesday on how that goes. Wanted to let you know as well that we received notice from VDOT late Friday afternoon that the revenue sharing funding for fiscal year 2014 has been approved, and for Montgomery County, that means $37,500 for Blue Springs Road, $250,000 for Mount Pleasant Road, $125,000 for Brush Creek Road, and $87,500 for Old Sourwood Road, which is a total state match of $500,000. That money will be available beginning in July. We have to go through the process of getting the Old Sourwood Road project as one that we had proposed be locally administered, so we've got to go through a process of getting all that moving along, but we're going to try to get that moving just as quickly as possible. But, we did get notice that the Transportation, Commonwealth Transportation Board approved that at their meeting on Friday. Also, on the transportation front, I had a very good conversation with Rob Carey, who's the District Administrator at VDOT today, about the parking ride issue, the parking ride lot. Rob is coming over on July the ninth. Rob and a gentleman who is with DRPT, the Public Transportation Group out of Richmond, apparently, all the concerns that had been expressed to the various folks, the legislators, the folks in Richmond, it has gotten some attention. And Rob told me this afternoon that the Deputy Commissioner is very interested in trying to find a resolution to that. He has told them to work with the county and the town to try to find a way to, find a way to address this. Now, I can't define that in terms of dollars or what that means, but Rob was very positive and said he wanted us to get together and talk. We're going to be identifying some of the VDOT properties that are around the 81 interchange, and having a conversation about that on the night. So, that was a very positive conversation, and I think that there's definitely a commitment there to try to address that parking ride concern. So, that was a good, a good first day back from vacation to have a conversation with him. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have this evening.
All right. Supervisor Creed.
Just one thing it has to do with what you just brought up, the Mount Pleasant got the $250,000 grant. Is there any indication as to whether VDOT is going to be able to go ahead and start doing some of these things or not?
I can find out. I don't know. You know, they haven't, they haven't made a lot of progress on previously approved revenue sharing projects. But also...
They definitely have geared up. They've got more people than they have.
Right.
So, they're gearing up for something, and if not for some of this work, I don't know what.
I'll be glad to, well, I won't say, I'll be glad to float that up the line to VDOT and just see if there's an anticipation that things are going to start moving a little more quickly. And I won't see Rob until the ninth, but maybe some of the local folks can help answer that question before then.
If just, all this would do is we'll take out some of the truders that are not going to really do a lot, but it might, some might get run flat dab over.
Ms. Perkins.
Came. Tomorrow, I will be going to the Alliance Investors Lunch at Noon. It's going to be in Pulaski. Then, again, I thank the Town of Christiansburg and the other entities for the Joynder Study. I was there Tuesday, along with several other people on the Board, and in fact, almost all Board members were there. And it went pretty well, obviously, and so I'm grateful for that. Otherwise, oh, no, well, and also on Thursday, I do have the MPO in Morin Oak, I guess.
Supervisor Brown.
Well, I echo the comments that have been previously made about us having a sustainable source of water, and thanks to Virginia Tech, Town of Blacksburg, and the Town of Christiansburg. And other than that, I will yield the rest of my time to this nice young lady over here.
Ms. Biggs.
I echo the thanks to the Town of Christiansburg, Town of Blacksburg, and to Virginia Tech. This is something that was worked on, I believe, for almost 13 years, and so, it's good to see it come to the resolution it did. And I think it's going to be very beneficial for everyone involved. And then, as far as my report, a lot of things happened at the Library Board meeting, June 19th. I wanted to bring some to your attention. Our new Chair of the Library Board for next year will be Karen Drake. She's from District B. And our Vice Chair is going to be Margaret Crystal from District E. And our Secretary is going to be Jenny Gardner, and she's from Floyd. So, that, those are our new officers. Jean Hyde, as you know, is leaving, and so they did a resolution for him, and I hope that our Board will, in turn, will do a resolution of appreciation for him. He was a great member. Along with that, they were doing fire inspections of the library, and it was brought to my attention that the libraries had not been regularly inspected. I don't know why, but this is something that Paula actually went out to ask to happen. And so, they weren't sure how the Meadowbrook one would be inspected, like who she should get in contact with, but I asked the question, because I know how schools are inspected all the time. I just assumed that government buildings were inspected on a regular basis, and that led me to ask the question, are they? Do we know?
I know the buildings that have sprinkler systems are inspected on a regular basis. I don't know the answer of all government...
Right, because probably it would be something that we need to look at, because we would have our safety of our citizens in those buildings to be concerned about. And so, Paula actually went out and asked for the inspections. And so, they were in the midst of fixing everything up at the Blacksburg Library, I believe, and they didn't even quite know who was going to do the Meadowbrook. And I knew we had the Fire Chief down there, but I wasn't sure how all that worked. Let's see, what else? Their strategic plan, they're going to be working on over the summer, and so, that should be done toward the end of summer. And then, probably September, Paula will have the goals of the library, and she'll present those to the Board. I think that's all that I have that right now. Oh, Chris, they wanted you to know that 60 people used Alexis Nexus in May on two of the computers. So, they wanted you to know that. All right, the other thing I attended that was interesting was on Saturday, the Dialogue on Race in Montgomery County, and Ms. Perkins came for part of that also. One of the things that was really interesting is they gave statistics in the criminal justice system that they had looked at in Montgomery County and Virginia and across the United States. And it seems like there's a disproportionate amount of African Americans that end up within the criminal justice system. And I, you know, knowing Chris's expertise there, I didn't know if you might be interested in some of this. But, how they're handling it, right now, the two police chiefs, the two town police chiefs and our sheriff are working together, and they're trying to, you know, see if this is, you know, how this is, might be happening within our county and within our towns. So, all three law enforcement agencies, I think, have come on board. This information was presented by Dr. Warry Reed from Virginia Tech. And so, if anyone's interested in that, I did bring an extra copy of the presentation. We can get copied for everybody, if you're interested in it. That was the main thing that sort of stood out to me, and they have different committees working on different things, and they're going to continue their work. This was a shorter presentation than before, and I think their next meeting is scheduled for January 18th. But, if anyone wants to be involved in any of their committees, they have committees, Education Committee, and Income Gap Jobs Committee, a Jim Crow White Privilege Committee, a Law Enforcement Committee, a Limited Presence Committee, and then their overall Dialogue on Race Committee. And I believe Matt and I were working on the limited presence and what that meant, looking at different Boards and that would be governmental Boards, to see how we could increase, you know, citizen participation all the way around, you know, like are we getting the message out that we have vacancies that come up and what the requirements are. And I personally was bragging about our webpage, because if you go to our webpage, you can find out all about, just go to the County Director, you can find out who is on the, all the different appointments that we make to committees and Boards and all of that. And you can find out any vacancies that might become available, and you can also find your application form. So, I did brag on our website, because it's easy to maneuver and get to. But, for those folks that might not have computer access, you know, that would be, that would be, we need to maybe find other ways to get the word out. So, that was, that was about it, and that's all I have for now.
Supervisor Todd.
Now, approximately 50 years ago, our Board made a mistake. They didn't get into the Water Authority. And it has, they just didn't foresee the growth and the need that we were going to have. The Board, before I got on it, started working on becoming a part of the Water Authority. There were compromises made by all parties, negotiations, and working through this process. This Board, along with VPI, Blacksburg, and Christiansburg, has assured this county of a reliable water source forever, basically, but also allowed us to have economic growth. Now, this Board may do a lot of things. We built some schools while I've been on the Board. There's been a lot of things done. But, I believe 50 years from now, there will be nothing as important as what we did in joining the Water Authority. And so, I want to commend this Board, I want to commend Marty for being a part of the negotiating team. I know Carol and the whole staff that was involved, that was key to moving things forward. And like I said, I'd like to praise the Board members that were here before me, who started this process a decade more ago to getting us to this point. And like I said, 50 years from now, our kids are going to be having water, but just as important, they're going to be able to have businesses that say, we're not coming there unless you've got a reliable water source. That's all I've got.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind Mr. Free and Mr. Pliss and Mary. It's Marty, 30, they have formally signed all the joint agreements and the final. Jerry is assigned to the PSA, Water Agreement, for the County Joynder, and the Water Agreement. And Mary is assigned Secretary for the PSA. They also have that, and this biggie also is assigned Secretary for Water. And we'll be finalizing the, uh, the SEC tomorrow, or I'd say, by Mr. Harvey, who will be the only member of the Water Authority, which will then be called NRV Regional Water.
NRV Regional Water Authority, that's right.
Not the, but NRV.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabriel.
Just two brief things. Went to the School Board meeting, and construction is on schedule. They also passed a resolution, echoing a resolution that we made earlier in the year, asking the state to revisit their equal protection clause to include same-sex, people of, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people as well. The other thing is that, I wasn't going to mention this, but Mary's thing, the Dialogue on Race reminded me, I attended the first one, I was unfortunately unable to attend this last one. But, I know that we, as a county, for example, have some hires that are coming up in IT and some other things as well. And I'd be interested to hear maybe, or to at least ask the staff to pay particular attention to diversity issues and hiring, and to reaching out outside of our comfort zone, and where we recruit these people from.
We always strive to do that, you know, and we try to encourage through different means, applicants from all races, creeds, backgrounds, I mean, because we, we would, we want to see a much more diverse county employment base.
No, I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't say that to accuse or anything like that. You know, this is, this is a problem I run into at Virginia Tech when we do hiring as well, is that, you know, the pool of applicants when you apply locally is racially and ethnically very limited because of how our counties are. And so, sometimes you have to think outside of the box, who you advertise and how you advertise in order to attract people, even to apply for the job. And then, once they apply for the job, then everybody, of course, is judged equally based upon their merits. But, anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, I want to echo everybody else on the Water Authority. I know that there's a few of us on the Board here who were pretty much at the beginning of it, and it's been a long, long time coming. And I appreciate the towns and VPI for their votes. And I guess tomorrow we'll sign the papers and be part of it. Now, one thing I wanted to go back to a little bit on the roads, Old Sourwood is listed on there as one of the projects. And as far as I know, quickly, if I'm wrong, this is going to be our first Nook Loop project, as I understand it.
I think that's why it's been proposed to VDOT. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we're going to administer it. One of the things that I would like to ask the Board, please, in order for that to get done, and not have to wait another year to see that this is going to work properly, I'd like to ask VDOT to expedite the funds for that project. Because I think if we wait till October, when it... October, when it will probably be available, it's too late to do the job this year. And I've talked to the people, and they say it's better to do it in the heat of the summer, the hotter the weather, the better, so it dries properly, hardens properly, and everything. And being a self-administered project, we inside can handle it, but I think, am I correct, Carol, the funding takes longer to get for that type?
Be available in March.
Now, as I understand it, there were some hoops we had to go through to...
It's just the procurement.
Procurement, yeah. Right. So I'd like to get that, if I can, because this, if this works, this can save us a lot of money down the road. And... Do I have everybody okay with that?
Pick it up, pick it up.
I don't have any objections. And Jim, just to bring us an update, can you tell us how is the dirt glue distress, the test road bed, how's it going?
Fine. I was out there with Dana Martin, week before last, last week, last Friday, I think, who was our representative from the Transportation Board, and he told me he's going to retire this week, but he told me, when I first mentioned to him, he'd like to see it, so I called him up and took him out there, and it looks the same as the last four times I looked at it, and he was very impressed with it. And I asked his assistance from the Board, Transportation Board, to try to get this funding, so we can get it early enough to get the job done. But they do not like to start jobs after October 1st because of weather, so, but it's hard as a rock, I'll tell you that, and I see no cracks, no potholes in it. It's been covered with gravel from, the gravel pavement coming out on it, and it's not all scraped up and scarred, and they wouldn't do it unless it looked good.
We've got my thumbs up.
Other than that, that's all I've got, and if there's no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.